Okay. It's six thirty. Okay, this is July the sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and it is six thirty. So I call this meeting to order. We'll do roll call first. Mayor Protan Villa Lobos, Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Styler, Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Glaze. And if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to these taxes, one state under God, one indivisible. And then invocation. Your gracious heavenly father, thank you, Lord, for the rain today, and thank you for your gift of salvation to each and every one of us. Thank you for this beautiful city of Martindale, and thank you for all of these people who are interested in helping all side the city government. And, Lord God, please give us discernment in all of our decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, public, public comments, please? Thank you. Okay, Mary Beth.
Okay, first of all, thanks Sonia for facilitating the donation of children's books for the Samorkis schools to our libraries. Thank you, we appreciate that. Secondly, you're on the fourth agenda, there was under future agenda items, so information says get information on library contract and conditions. And it hasn't been on there since then. Please put that back on the agenda, please. Okay, now then the library has hosted several events, and these are all funded by grants. Yeah, every Thursday from eleven to twelve is story time. That's for kids pre-K and up, and there's some homeschool kids that attend that. Cal Fridays from eleven to twelve also is coffee and conversation, and that's funded by St. David's. On Saturdays, we have summer reading, and that's a Dollar General grant and also Save the Children grant. And on July the fifteenth coming up, there's a tie dye shirt night. And we welcome the city council members to make their own tie dye shirt, discuss your size, and we'll provide you all the goods to make them a shirt. Nick, you need it. And on July twenty-second is the Bloom Storytelling, with Bloom's grandchild stories. In addition, there's a Lego plug and Dunston wagons for older kids. The I'm Your Neighbor program, this is stuff in me, this provides free books ages zero up to four to reach out to all cultures. And these books are free. On Saturday, September sixteenth from nine to one, we're going to have a health and wellness fair, and that's at St. David's grant. Okay, for physical part of your body, we have physical therapy, people, blood pressure checks, eye exams. Oh, okay, anyway, there's all kinds of health, physical health checks. If you want an eye exam, just sign up, it's a free eye exam. Now, we have the peer support will be there, and it's all confidential. On Saturday, October twenty-first, from twelve is the Fall Family Festival. We are, we're gonna have a bounce house for kids, train rides through town, and bunch of games.
What, what day?
October twenty-first, from ten to twelve.
Oh, I can't.
That's different than August twelfth? I thought you had something on August twelfth.
Oh, wait.
August twelfth, the, oh, okay, excuse me, continue.
We had to change it because of our health.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Sorry, too.
Anyway, there's something on September sixteenth and also October twenty-first, and it has to do with when we can get a, the September sixteenth, that's when we can get a, that big old giant van, half hell and van to come in to do body checks. And the convention's unlimited. Next meeting is Tuesday, July twenty-seven, at six.
All right, thank you. Okay, Sam Clinton.
Good evening, fellow city council members and the public. I'm giving you a state of the park update. Our parks, namely Allen Bates and Phase One, which I think it's about time for us to create a name for that park and not call it Phase One. But our parks were very well used over this July Fourth weekend. Phase One at the High Point had promptly eighty cars at one time. The parking in Allen Bates had overflowed out onto nineteen seventy-nine. So there were five to six cars parked on nineteen seventy-nine at the curve, something which I think is very dangerous. We, we should make signs saying that the lots and fan and across the street are available for overflow parking. Nobody knows that, and they park on nineteen seventy-nine. At, at Phase One, the porta potty eventually had a sign on it that said, use at your own risk. It, it was completely full. I, I managed to go, go there, sweep it out and, and look at it. But at that other point, it was already too far gone. The assorted amount of diapers were in the parking lot, a bra, bottle caps, children's straws, cigarette butts, truckloads of garbage, truckloads of bottles. The dumpster that we had here was completely full by Saturday night. And it forward to accommodate the garbage that I knew would be coming. I personally went there and took about ten bags of garbage down. Because also with our event we had on July Fourth, the dumpster again became full. We need another dumpster on July Fourth, or we need appropriate signage to eliminate the amount of recycling and bottles that, that we are getting. Also, in Phase One, the public has created rope swings. They have created pathways down to the river that are carved into the riverbank. There, as I again said, there's straws, there's, there's bottle caps. We need to, and I want to thank Mike Holmes for helping me and Mike McClabb put up eighteen T-posts, which we were gonna use for the park mobile signs to install those. But, but really, we need to have our infrastructure and our maintenance much better coordinated and in line before we try and increase the amount of park that we want to have in, in our city. We need additional signage, and we need additional signage in Spanish. Over seventy percent of the visitors that come to Phase One are non-English speaking people. And so we need signage for that, because the police talked, talked to them as they walked around and said, did, did you look at the rule sign? Did you read the signs? All of them said, no, no, they didn't. And so I, I would like to coordinate almost with all of us to help perhaps go down to the park and see it and, and really see what's going on. I go down there every single day, sometimes twice a day. And I'm a dedicated person about my, my belief in, in, in these things. But please, let's, let's start to maintain our parks with proper signage, clean porta potties, and garbage not overflowing out of the garbage cans. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Susan Swan.
Good evening. I'm Susan Shaw. I live just down the street at three oh one Main. And as a lot of people do, I'm sure, we have a tradition on Fourth of July for the parade. We have family and friends come and hang out at our house, because we have the perfect spot to watch the parade, and we've been doing that since we moved here. I did want to first thank everybody that put effort and energy into putting on that parade. But there were a couple of things this year that were tremendously disappointing to several of us. One was our son called, couldn't get in the neighborhood. He has always come to our house for the parade, and this time he was being stopped and wasn't allowed to enter the residential portion of the city. I think it, I'm not clear, but maybe somewhere up by the post office where they were wanting people to park. And all he's done every other year is say, going to my mom's house, they live on this street, and then he's always been let in. But for some reason this year, none of our guests were able to come and park at our house. That's, you know, we could deal with that, I suppose, if, had we known about it, but that's the other complaint. I don't know the reasons that went behind that. Maybe they're valid, we don't know. But the point was, no one told us that would happen. And so all of our traditional friends and family thought they were gonna come to our house, and it just caused problems. But I think the bigger frustration that I have about Fourth of July is I do not know why we have a fireworks ordinance if we don't enforce it. And you can't enforce a fireworks ordinance on the Fourth of July if you don't have officers on duty. The idea that we don't have a cop on duty on Fourth of July, I was stunned. I hate them. But the bigger point is they're against the law here. I went and found who was doing it myself. One was a stone's throw from here. The other was down by the river, just this side of the bridge. And I went and found him in just a few minutes. I called the non-emergency number for the Martindale Police Department, which transferred me to Caldwell County. And I explained, it's not an emergency, but, you know, I would like someone to deal with the fireworks. Well, Caldwell County explained to me, they can't even enforce that, because it's not a county-wide ordinance, it's only a municipal ordinance. And we, he informed me, we have no officers on duty. I think that is incredible. So I wanted to bring those things to your attention and just ask that we maybe take a look at those for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there were police on duty on July Fourth. I saw the, I saw somebody drive through my neighborhood, and they didn't stop, but that was county.
Oh, Laura.
County, county.
Laura, did you have a, a comment? I saw you picked up a sheet.
I picked it up.
Oh, the agenda, okay. Okay, so we now have a, a presentation from the Texas Water Development Board discussing the National Flood Insurance Program and the Community Rating System Program.
Yeah, so I have Kate De Naro, and I think Kate, you can unmute yourself now. I have you on the top screen.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, my cat decided to join the meeting at the last minute. Typical, right? Thank you for having me. I'm really sorry I couldn't be there in person. It was my intent to be there in person and, and meet you all. But I had a last-minute mandatory meeting that I had to attend. So I, I wasn't able to come down and be there in person, but I, I do have a presentation. And I can share it with everyone after the meeting so that you, you have it for your reference afterwards.
So Kate, did you want to at least introduce yourself a little bit to the council and public as well?
I'm sorry. Yes, let's do that first. My name is Katie Chanero. I'm a flood outreach specialist with the Texas Water Development Board. We are the NFIP State Coordinating Agency for State of Texas. So we're, are like a liaison between FEMA and the local communities. We do a lot of the same things that FEMA does in relation to compliance. We do a lot of trainings. And I had the opportunity to meet Adrian at a, had a four-day training earlier this year in Beaumont. And I, I'm not an insurance expert. Our agency focuses more on regulatory things and compliance. I think I'm able to answer the questions that you guys had, but I'm not sure they'll have too many more details than what's in the presentation. But we, I can get your, your answers, your questions answered, if you still have questions after this presentation. And I'm also not a CRS expert. I actually didn't include too much on CRS in this presentation, because I think that we will be working with Stephanie Weeks on, on entering, if, if you're still interested in entering the CRS. And I, I do have one slide that's gonna be about the community assistance visit that I will likely lead as a part of entering the CRS system.
Excellent.
Okay, good to, to share my screen now?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, okay. So like I said, I'm just gonna mostly go over NFIP and floodplain development, not, not too much into the community rating system. And forgive me if I am covering stuff that you guys already know. I wasn't too sure if everybody was familiar with all the, the terms and things. And I just wanted to make sure I covered some big picture items. So the National Flood Insurance Program relies on three program areas. They also, they often use this three-legged stool analogy, because if you take away one leg, the whole stool is gonna fall over. So under flood hazard identification, we have mapping, and we have types of flooding that are designated for the community. Under the flood mitigation program, that covers regulations, codes, zoning, and also grants for community-wide projects. And the last leg of the stool is flood insurance, which provides financial insurance to help communities recover from losses. These three programs, they, they do work independently. They kind of have their own rules, but then they also work together. And the presentation will explain a little bit more about how they work together. But I want to emphasize that there are requirements for certain areas that, that don't need to be met in other areas. So just to go over special flood hazard areas, they are considered high-risk areas. They are where there is one percent or greater chance of flooding in any given year. They're often called a one-hundred-year floodplain, but we're trying to move away from that term, because we all know that flooding happens more than once every one hundred years. The zones are gonna be, they're gonna have an A or a V prefix when you're looking at the maps. And on the flood insurance rate map or the firm, it's gonna be these darker shaded areas. And then on the National Flood Hazard Layer Viewer, they're gonna be areas with a blue-green color. This is an interactive mapping website that you can use to look up properties and look at your community in, in general. I did a little screenshot of Martindale. So here are your flood zones. Like I said, these blue-green areas are the standard special flood hazard areas. They are A zones or AE zones. This striped area is the floodway. So you do have a little bit of floodway within Martindale. The orange areas are what used to be called the five-hundred-year floodplain. And now we refer to them as a point-two percent annual chance of flooding. And you have mostly AE zones, so that means that there are base flood elevations provided for almost the whole city. I think there's just a little stretch over here, not sure if you can see my arrow, but a little bit, a little stretch over here, that's just an A zone. So that means that there's no base flood elevations provided for that strip. But there is another type of mapping that is being released statewide called BLE, Base Level Engineering. And so we should be able to find the, the elevations for, for this little strip as well. Adrian and I can talk about that another time if needed.
That's fine.
I know you have a lot of questions about insurance in general, so like I said, I'm gonna try to cover all of those for, for you. Just as an overview, flood insurance is always voluntary. Property owners not required to have flood insurance. Flood insurance rates are based on several different conditions, and I want to have more information on that in another slide. In most cases, someone would purchase flood insurance from a provider that is approved by the NFIP. So you're not buying flood insurance directly from the National Flood Insurance Program, but they have a number of providers that, that they work with to provide insurance. The rates should not vary between these providers. It is, it is encouraged to shop around, but it's, it's not because the, the rates should be different. You want to make sure that the rates are the same, no matter which provider you're going to. And if somebody is providing something that's really cheap, or if it seems really expensive, then you need to find out what they are, basically what they're doing wrong, because the rate should be the same between all the different providers. Private insurance is different from the National Flood Insurance Program insurance, and those rates can vary. Private insurance is available in Texas. It's, it's relatively new occurrence that's happening nationwide. And it, and it different, it, it's different state to state. So I'm just gonna focus on the National Flood Insurance. What's the difference between assistance, disaster assistance, and insurance? After a disaster, you can be eligible for individual assistance through FEMA, but that requires a federal disaster declaration. It's designed to make homes only safe, sanitary, and fit to occupy. So there, the money that you get from individual assistance is not gonna bring your home back to the condition that it was before the disaster happened. The average payout is only about five hundred dollars, or five thousand dollars. And it may come in the form of a loan that you have to pay back. And then in most cases, flood insurance is required after receiving disaster assistance. So you're not gonna be able to get disaster assistance over and over and over. FEMA wants you to get, go ahead and purchase a, a flood insurance policy. So on the insurance side, claims can be filed almost immediately after flood, any flood event, doesn't matter if it's federally declared or not. It's more customizable, customizable to different individuals. So, you know, looking at your house and, and what you're trying to insure. Insurance is, like I said, more customizable than, than what you get from disaster assistance. The average payout is sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's based on, I think, the last ten years, I think they said that, that quote was based on. And you're already paying for, you know, whatever you get with a claim, you've already paid for it with your premium. You don't have to pay anything back. The only thing with insurance is that you may not be able to receive other types of disaster assistance if you have received insurance payout. A group flood insurance policy is something that FEMA may issue following a disaster for applicants who are required to obtain flood insurance. They suddenly have to have flood insurance, and they never had it before. This is an option. I'm not too familiar with it, I just know the basics. So they provide twenty-four hundred dollars per individual for a three-year period of flood insurance. The three-year period starts sixty days after the date of the federal disaster declaration. The coverage per policy is only seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five eight, seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars, which is considerably less than what you can get if you buy your own policy. I think it's two hundred and fif, no, it's one thousand, it's one hundred thousand, yeah. If you buy flood insurance outside of a group policy. At the end of thirty-six months, the post-seeholders then responsible for purchasing and maintaining flood insurance on their own. And again, if they don't maintain flood insurance, it affects their eligibility for future FEMA disaster assistance. You may be asking, what's insured and what's not insured? So structures that are walled and roofed principally above ground, they're insured. Manufactured homes that are permanently anchored and buildings that are under construction can be insured. Building contents can be insured, but you have to have a separate policy for all your stuff. You know, your furniture, your electronics, anything that's within the house is gonna be on a separate policy from the building policy. And what's not insured is structures that are underground, structures that are built over water after nineteen eighty-two, fences, swimming pools, motor vehicles, storage tanks, unenclosed machinery and equipment. So if you think about all the machinery, you know, your HVAC and all that stuff that's inside your house, that's insured. But if you are running some type of, like a mechanic shop, and you have some kind of equipment that is sitting outside, that's not gonna be insured, and then crops and livestock are not insured. Does anybody have any questions so far? I don't want to be covering too much or going too fast without letting people ask questions.
Kate, I'm Sam Clinton on the city council. You said that flood insurance wasn't, it's voluntary, but don't you have to pay flood insurance if you have a mortgage?
Yes, but, um, yeah, it's, they say it's completely voluntary, because you don't have to have a mortgage either. Like, that's, that's something that you are applying for. So there are conditions where if you're trying to do one thing, then you, you know, need to do something else. But just in general, like, you don't have to have a mortgage, so you don't have to have insurance. I, I'm sorry if that, that is confusing. Does that, does that make a little more sense?
No, but that's all right. If you have a mortgage, you have to pay flood insurance.
Yes.
You have to get flood insurance and have flood insurance if you're paying a mortgage on your home.
Right, it's the bank, though, it's not them. There's no.
Oh, they aren't requiring it, but the bank does. Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yes, that's.
That's where I was confused.
Yes, that is a good way to explain it. I'm sorry. That, yeah, that's a better way to explain it. The bank is requiring it, not FEMA, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Um, and I, I can adjust the slide when, when I send it out to you guys to, to, to clarify that. So FEMA has rolled out a relatively new methodology for determining rates. And so this is just sort of an overview on this new methodology. You know, it used, used to depend more on, are you in a special flood hazard area, or are you out of the special flood hazard area? Which means that if, you know, on one side of the street, you're not in a special flood hazard area, and on the other side of the street you are, like, those, those two properties, the rates could have, could have been wildly different before they rolled out this new methodology. So now they have a lot more things that they're looking at to determine rates. And the two kind of buckets are, where is it built and how is it built? So they're looking at a building's distance from a flooding source. They're looking at the ground elevation relative to the surrounding area and the flooding sources. And they're looking at community characteristics and type of flooding. So is it coastal area? Are they gonna have storm surge? Is it riverine? Is it flash flood, flash flooding? Are they on a lake? Those are all different types of, of flooding that they look at. And as far as how is it built, they're looking at construction and foundation types. So is there a basement? Is it elevated on piers? Looking at first floor height. And if you're familiar with an elevation certificate, those used to be required in order to get insurance, but they're no longer required. But having an elevation certificate can refine your rate. They're looking at the number of floors, the building occupancy. Is it a single-family home? Is it a multifamily home? Is it a commercial development? They're also looking at flood openings and floodproofing. Flood openings are, are required in any area that is enclosed below the BFE. And floodproofing is something that is only available for non-residential structures. And then they're also gonna. And then they're also going to look at what are the machinery and equipment standards uh implemented on the structure? Is the, you know, is your HVAC, is, is the air conditioning unit elevated at the same height as the first floor? Or is it still sitting below BFE? Um, those type of things. I think you guys also were questioning, had questions about repetitive loss. So you will not be denied insurance based on repetitive losses. But your premium can be significantly different or higher due to repetitive losses. Claims with no payout does, do not count as a loss. If the structure is mitigated, whi- which means it's, it can be relocated or elevated, the claims history can be reset. And then the premium would be reduced. And uh, two definitions are repetitive loss. Standard repetitive loss means. Two or more losses of at least one thousand dollars in a ten-year period. And a severe repetitive loss structure means four or more losses of at least five thousand dollars. And two of those losses uh have to occur within the, within a ten-year period. Are there any questions based on this slide?
No.
Okay. And if there are a lot of, um. Structures with, with lot, with repetitive loss or severe repetitive loss, um. There are, are some options that, that you can apply for um, to help, help those people out. So the main one is a flood mitigation assistus- assistance program or FMA. Um, that is something that the, the money starts with FEMA, but they. Uh, the Water Development Board administers it. And so what happens is that um, a local community would create an application. Um, and send it to the Texas Water Development Board. The Texas Water Development Board would kind of package all of these things together and then send it to FEMA. And then FEMA approves. The Water Development Board application and then we are able to distribute that money to the local communities. And then the local communities will distribute the money to the individual property owners. And this is an annual grant, so it happens every year. Uh, the applications are typically due in the fall. It's not disaster dependent, so you, you don't have to have a recent disaster to, to get this grant. However, it is competitive. So, you know, what, what you guys uh send. An application that you guys put in would, would compete with other applications that are happening in Texas. And then Texas is going to compete with other states. Um, we typically, I mean, we get money every year. And from what I've heard, we typically get the most money or, or sometimes we compete with uh Louisiana, I think. As far as getting the most money every year from FEMA for this program. Um, the minute, the, the types of activities, uh, they have to be uh for flood mitigation only. And they're typically elevation and buyout programs for substantially damaged structures, repetitive loss. And severe repetitive loss structures. Sometimes uh, we also fund small uh flood infrastructure projects. And this year, um, more money than ever before was uh available. And so we're hoping that that trend continues um, uh, in the coming years. Another option for uh assistance. For repetitive loss structures and, and substantially damaged structures is increased cost of compliance. This is actually a, a different type of flood insurance coverage. So usually when you get flood insurance, you will um. In- include an application for increased cost of compliance. So the key point is that the structure has to be insured through the NFIP. You only get about thirty thousand dollars per policy, which isn't often quite enough to elevate. A structure on its own, but um, it, it helps. Um, any damage received has to be flood related. And then the structure has to meet the criteria for repetitive loss, severe repetitive loss. Or uh, determined to be stan- substantially damaged. And I have a slide on, on substantial damage. Um, the ICC is, is filed separately from a regular claim. Um, and then the ICC money can be used as a local match. So for those FMA grants. Uh, there's typically a seventy-five, twenty-five percent split. So the, the federal government. Provides seventy-five percent to do whatever projects. And then there's a, a local match of twenty-five percent. And so what can happen is anybody, a- a- all of the individuals that are, are trying to um. Mitigate their structures based on damage, they can all pitch in their uh ICC money. And that can be considered the local match for the FMA grant. And the four things that um ICC money pays for is either flood proofing. A non-residential structure and then relocating, elevating or demolishing. A residential or non-residential structure. Typically, when you demolish a structure, it's kind of to, to wipe the slate clean and then you're going to rebuild a new structure. That meets all of the floodplain management regulations and therefore it's, it's going to be safer. Um, I did want to point out what the definitions for substantial damage and substantial improvement. So substantial damage is. The reconstruct- uh, substantial improvement is reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition or other type of improvement. Where the cost of that improvement equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value. Of the building before the start of construction. This term includes structures that have incurred substantial damage, even if no repair work is actually performed. Substantial damage is damage of any origin sustained by a structure whereby the cost of restoring the structure. To its before damage condiction, condition would equal or exceed fifty percent. Of the market value of the structure before the damage occurred. And in, in either situation, if it's, if it, if it's um sustained substantial damage. Or the property owner is, is making improvements that uh. Reached that threshold and it, it, it is designated as a substantial improvement. Um, at that point, the structure has to be brought into compliance with any current floodplain regulations. So if it, if it wasn't elevated before, um, and, and it fits the bill, either substantial improvement or substantial damage, it's going to have to be elevated. If it didn't have flood openings, um, it, it will have to have flood openings, you know, just whatever is um included in your ordinance. Uh, the structure would have to meet those conditions.
Okay, I had a question on that fifty percent. Valuation. So if someone turns in a building permit here at the city and we require the valuation. Um, how do we make sure someone's honest about it?
Yeah, so it's not going to be based on a homeowner. Um, there are a list of sources. Um, where they would get the estimates for the types of repairs um, or improvements that are being done. So it could come from a contractor, but there are, um, there are other, some other sources that you can, you can use. We, we have a whole, we have a whole presentation on substantial damage and improvement. It, it can be kind of complicated. Um. So it's, it, it's tough to, to get into here, but um, it definitely is not just going to come from the property owner themselves.
Right. Uh, so the Water Development Board has a, say a word bank or a. A list of items that is a general value of the improvement. So say it's. Reroofing the house, that's roughly ten thousand dollars according to Texas Water Development Board. Is that the kind of resources you're talking about?
No, it's, it, it should be done. Uh, it's going to be based on um, what's like the, the local. Um, the local costs. So if you think about, you know. The cost of materials or the cost of labor in Houston versus Amarillo. Or Martindale versus El Paso, like those, those costs may not be the same statewide. So it's going to be based on uh, what's, what's the estimates for the local community.
Okay. I, I'll get back to you on that one with the other presentation that you have.
Okay.
On the substantial improvements.
Sure, there's um, there's a really good FEMA document as, as well um, that I can send, send you all. It's, it's called. Answers to questions about. It has a long title, but it, it starts out answers to questions about substantial damages, substantial improvements, something like that. It's a, maybe a thirty or forty page um, guidebook, which is a, a little easier to digest. Than the um, the desk reference, which is uh probably a couple hundred pages long.
Very good.
Share that with you as well. Um, and. Uh, for inspections, this is for any kind, you know, after any permit has been issued. And a structure is being worked on, um, you want to do an inspection. And so you're checking that the structure is located on the site. Um. According to the plans, you're going to be checking for the first floor elevation before fr- framing starts. Um, or after, you know, everything's done. Um, I, I didn't get a chance to. Uh, review the Martindale ordinance, so I'm, I'm not sure if you guys require. Um, elevation at BFE or if, if you have some kind of free board, a lot of communities have a free board, which requires. Um, the, the first floor to be elevated a foot or eighteen inches or two feet um, above the base flood elevation.
We do, we have a two-foot board.
Okay, that's awesome. That's good to hear. Uh, you're also checking for flood openings or flood and flood resist- resistant materials below the base flood elevation. And then you're checking to see that the heating, ventilation, the air conditioning, plumbing, all that stuff is um, elevated. At the same um, elevation that, that the first floor is supposed to be elevated to. Um, and then if, if you're, if you find that any of these conditions aren't met, then you need to stop construction. Um, and, and work with the property owner to, to bring the structure back into compliance. Uh, this is leading up to your questions about uh, section thirteen sixteen. So if, if you're finding that the structure is not meeting those local standards, then you have a, a handful of uh. Methods for enforcing those. You can issue a stop work order, which is, is, just comes from the. The floodplain management department or the, the building official department. You can issue fines. Uh, we, we encourage uh, not just one base fine, because you know, they just. Pay five hundred dollars and then be done with it. It's, it's better to do a, a daily fine for whatever violations are occurring. You can do a injunction, which is kind of a, a court ordered version of a stop work order. Imprisonment, that it technically, that's uh, it's, it's on the slide, but it's, it's not very common. I think that um, it only results if there's been some sort of death involved. Um, you know, if, if there was a flood and uh, a neighbor or, or somebody died as a result of. A violation, then imprisonment could, could be an option. Um, and then the last option is that there, uh, section thirteen sixteen. So uh, section thirteen sixteen allows for the denial of flood insurance coverage. For any property that is in violation of the local floodplain management regulations. This is typically. Uh, looking at new construction or those substantial improvements. So if you have structures. That are pre-firm, meaning they were built before your floodplain maps came out, before you adopted your. Ordinance and, and had all those regulations, those structures are not going to get a thirteen sixteen. It's only for, for typically only for new construction or substantial improvements. And the community has to go through all those other enforcement options prior to issuing a, a section thirteen sixteen. It's intended to be used as a last resort. And typically the risk of suffering flood damages without financial assistance. Is sufficient to convince a property owner to correct their violations. But without flood insurance coverage, it also impacts um, the resale value of the house. Um, and, and eligibility, eligibility for mortgage like, like someone had, had mentioned, um, if, if.
Thank you.
Yes, is that, is that clear? Does that kind of answer the questions that you guys had?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and uh. I want to finish with this uh, community assistance visit. Um, before entering the community rating system, we have to do a compliance check. To see how the community is, is, is doing. Um, so. We, we call it a cav, um, and it's an in-person visit either by FEMA staff or by TWD, TWDB staff. Um, it has two purposes. One is to ensure that the community is enforcing its floodplain regulations. And then also to provide any technical assistance that you guys might have. We do a discussion of the floodplain management program. Uh, we do an inspection of permit files going back five years. So we just want to make sure that all the paperwork is filled out the way it's supposed to be filled out. And then we also do a tour of floodplain areas. It's, we, we don't go into structures. We typically don't even leave the truck. But we just drive through all your special flood hazard areas and, and look at all the buildings to see if, if they look like they're compliant. If we have any um, questions, if anything looks questionable, we'll go back and look at um, the permit files to see what is written on paper. Um, and then if, if there are any administrative problems or potential violations. Then we work with you to, to bring the program into compliance. We're not, you know, we're not looking to. To kick you out of the NFIP at all. Uh, we just want to make sure that the program's good and, and fix things up. Um, if, if anything seems like an issue. I think I had a few more slides, but it's kind of going more into um, the fact that you guys had floodways. And if, if you don't have any questions about uh, how to uh, development requirements for in the floodway, we, we don't have to go into the other slides. Uh, I do want to give you guys a chance to ask more questions if you have questions on what I've covered so far.
So at the last meeting, we had a question about where can we see more data about Marindale flooding? Um, a- as mentioned before, we, we had two major flood events in twenty fifteen. Um, and this whole conversation has started because of those big disasters that Marinda has had in the past. And to kind of plan for the area. We would also like to see the data on that if there's any. I would imagine that there is since Marindale did receive federal assistance. Um, in twenty fifteen, do you know where the city can go and look at that information for themselves?
Are you looking for? Um. Cause there's, there's flood claim data. And then there's like public assistance. If, if the community received assistance from, from FEMA. Um, there's, there's two different types of assistance. There's public assistance. Um, so if, let's say your schools and your city hall, your fire stations. Um, roads, bridges, if those types of things were damaged. Then you probably would have gotten public assistance. Um, and. I'm, I'm not sure how, if you guys don't have a record of what kind of public assistance you receive. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure how, if you guys don't have a record of what kind of public assistance you received, we can look into that. I, I don't know off the top of my head how, how to research that, but we can look into that. Then there's individual assistance, which, um, home, homeowners would apply for on their own. And, and I mentioned that a little bit, uh, uh, on another slide, um, which basically just gives them a, a small check to, to bring their, how, make their house habitable again. And, and I'm not sure if that is, uh, publicly available either. And then there's your insurance claim information, which you can receive information on all of the, the, the claims that were filed and that were paid out, but you have to sign, um, it's called, uh, information, ISA, A information sharing, something agreement. I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what it stands for, um, but you'd have to, uh, work with FEMA to, to sign this agreement, and then they can provide that information for you. The, the gentleman for Texas, I believe his name is John Bowman, um, and I can send you his contact information so that you can work on getting that ISA, A, um, started.
Thank you, Kate.
And you, you typically need that kind of information if you're going to apply for, um, any of those grants, the flood mitigation assistance grants, or hazard mitigation assistance grants. It's, or if you're writing some kind of, um, hazard mitigation plan, it's, it's good to have that data. So you have that, that big picture. Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
That was great. That was a good presentation.
Good. I'm glad that it's helpful. It's, there's, there's so much to cover. So it's always a little tricky how to like whittle it down to what any particular community might need.
Yes, thank you very much.
Kate, we appreciate it.
Okay, I'll stop sharing my screen now. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. It looks like someone asked in the chat if the, the slides can be available to citizens. I'll, I'll leave you guys to, to share that out if, if you feel it's.
Yeah, I can, Carlton. Um, we, we'll probably have to update the agenda packet, um, just for the record. Uh, once I have that presentation sent to me, I could distribute that.
That's good. Thank you, Adrian. Okay, so I was just going to do a little recap on, uh, the Fourth of July parade, and I had a number of people I wanted to thank. Gary Jobcor, all the cadets that came out. Uh, and this is in no particular order. It's just as it came to my mind. The Martindale Police Department, all three officers came out, and also Andrea Turner, who's our, um, I always forget, uh.
Reserve.
Reserve, thank you. And what she did was she came up with a bunch of things for the children and me, and it has a little tag on it, and it says, "Have a safe and happy Fourth of July, Martindale Police Department." And so she gave me some festive things to wear. I, I wanted to make sure and thank her for that. We had the precinct three constables that helped come and fill in, so, um, our security was really good. I wanted to also thank Sylvie and David Gonzalez, who gave me a ride in their really cool car. Um, and Nick, and Sonia, and Rob Devini all put the community picnic together. Rob cut the grass and Nick cooked barbecue, and Sonia did a whole bunch of stuff. I'm not sure what all. But all kinds of paper products and come downtown and dusted off all the seats and everything. That was really good. Um, my husband, Bill Glaze, he helped wherever I needed help, closing down the streets, like that at the end and stuff, and, uh, whatever I needed to do. And Bob Purcell helped line up the parade start, as did Mary and David Paul. We probably needed another person there. The line was pretty long, trying to get all those little pieces of, uh, paper back to the announcer on time. Um, Tom Fudge helped a lot. I know he was paid to do a lot of stuff, but he was made himself available, doing the banners and whatever I needed to have done. Jane Latham and her brother, um, Ross King, they provided the parking by the post office and also offered the parking, uh, next to the Burger Barn, so that we had all that parking. And the announcer was Elektra Zunica. Did I miss something? Carlton for.
Decorating.
Oh, yes, Carlton, and he contacted Bluebonnet and got some fans delivered and water delivered downtown. I knew I was going to miss somebody. And one more, very, very important to me was, I, I noticed their business cards had Kiko, but I've always known him as Carmen, and Irma Lyseak, he's the pastor of the Holy Ground Church, and they provided the parking for the staging area. And so I think there were a few little glitches. I kind of just organized it by myself. I got a kick out of Chris Berman because he said, "Look, I, I wasn't invited to come to any meetings." And I'm like, "What meetings? I'm just sitting here organizing. I'm asking you if you can come and be in the parade and stuff like that." So I think next year, if we, uh, get a few meetings going, we'll, uh, correct those glitches. As noted, we've, uh, we do have a great police force, and I was not closing the streets down, and he did. So I thank him for that, and, uh, so we'll get better communication on that next year. So that's the Fourth of July, and then we're going to move on to the Communities Unlimited, and they've been really busy with quite a few different meetings. And so I'm going to let Mark Pearson speak to this.
Should I talk pretty quick here? So my name is Mark Pearson. I work for nonprofit group Communities Unlimited, across seven southern states, various areas. I have to tell more about that afterward, but for about the last year have been engaged with Martindale through this USDA Rural Development sponsored Rural Place Making Innovation Challenge. And I think slightly more than half the folks in the room at various times have been in some of those meetings. They're doing some listings for kind of local priorities here, and, uh, and y'all have been really welcoming. It's been really fun to get to kind of visit Martindale regularly down here. So I've realized I'm now doing it on weekends to watch the large parade, come through, come and watch the Fourth of July parade. So you guys are kind of like catching here, so it's.
Look at you yet.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for having us. So from listening to the group that's been meeting, and Carlton's been nice to share his meeting space, and sometimes we've met over here. Um, one of the things they kind of centered on is just that the river and the parks or access to the river are just one of the really kind of deeply valued assets for the community. And so from the group, which is essentially just like a voluntary activity, and those are open meetings. So if anybody, um, Mary Beth mentioned it earlier, but if anybody else is interested, who's either listening or follows us later wants to reach out, we'd be glad to invite you, or if there's someone else you know should be in that meeting, it's intended to be open. But we, the group kind of agreed to do some research about just were there things that could be done to support the city or do some research about augmenting and help preparing that park space for the future. And, um, there are kind of three, three bullet points that came under that. One was looking at some of the master park planning, which Adrian had started some draft work, I've surveyed in twenty twenty-one, had a, a good start of the draft. And then we realized, I think just in the last couple of weeks, heard about the, is it Building Resilient Communities grant? That is going to fund some comprehensive planning for the city. That is really fantastic. I did not know that that existed to the degree of scope, but I think that's imminent. A piece of that scope is to do master parks planning with professionals, and not, not that I'm not professional, but that's not my area. So, um, that, I think that's really exciting, and I think you have, you're engaged for a community. The, the second aspect that we talked about was just doing good community. One of the best ways to get input from the community for what they want to see and what they want to have in the park. And Laura Sanchez Fowler, who'd been participating in the groups and had a lot of good research expertise and background, volunteered that, um, she'd done appreciative inquiry surveys before that are meant to be personal and face-to-face. So if no one has buttonholed you and asked you five questions, they may at some point. And if you see Laura or anybody else coming with five questions, um, your participation will help your perks be better for the long run. So just slow down for a minute, engage with them. So that's kind of the second bullet there. She has started on those already and is recruiting other people. It's pretty easy to do that. She interviewed more than ten people for so Fourth of July up and down, Eric collecting that good information. As soon as y'all have professionals doing master park planning, that's going to be good information to hand off to them, where you've got a good jumpstart on. The third kind of aspect we really can have is just doing some research on parks. And you know the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department has local park grants. Um, I think they're one of the names on the sign down by the playgrounds in Allen Bates Park that contributed toward that. You'll see in Parks of the State. Two thoughts on this here. The application deadline for this is pretty soon. It's August first. I think a year from now, August first, twenty twenty-four, if, uh, when you've hired the folks that are going to do that master park planning as part of that, if you can tell them, "We'd like this work to be done," to maybe have the city in place to do a really robust application to Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, or even private other grants. I think City of Martindale might have a best-in-class grant application ready to go by the summer of twenty twenty-four. And so I think that's the larger recommendation, is you've got, most folks, most cities in the state aren't getting that kind of funding to do that planning, and you're going to have good fresh planning. You've got expert volunteer input on the community engagement already. The small question that we have is that I think Laura and I are kind of willing to volunteer, essentially. If there's, if there's any window of trying to pull together a small grant application before this Au- August first, that makes sense. The council, and I think the way to view that would be, is there anything that puts you a step forward so that you're ready for that application a year from now? And so I'm going to run through some slides just really fast here. This is not an, um, agenda item for action today. If the council decided to make this application, um, I think that would need to happen at your July twentieth council meeting, or you'd have to do a special meeting. Um, there's a form letter, not a form letter, there's a resolution, you know, if you kind of pass around, just for you one of those, that is what would have to be adopted, saying the city is choosing to allocate funding. And, and I'm not trying to talk you into this. I think it's a honest question if it's a good fit for the city or not. So, yeah, listen, I haven't finished slides. So Texas Parks and Wildlife, their local grant program, August first is the deadline. Y'all will be eligible for the Small Community Program and the Non-Urban Outdoor Program. They, applications submitted August. They score those through November. Their commission approves grants January. I think they know it's, it's like the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth of January next year. Also, by October, speaking of long-term thing, y'all are going to know if you're getting the Shared Use Path Grants by October, and you'll be able to kind of plan around that in that next year also. Local Parks, what it's eligible for is acquisition, which kind of just kind of emphasized slightly, acquisition and or development of parks and recreation facilities. It requires fifty percent matching grants, which is challenging with a small city budget, but I think there's something important we discovered here. So it requires fifty percent match. The parkland has to be dedicated perpetuity. There's a four-year timeline for grant completion. Next slide. So the, and I, I borrowed their slideshow and cut it down from seventy-seven to ten. So the full slideshow is available if you want it. Last Wednesday, I didn't mention Adrian and I were able to meet with the two, two of the folks on the team that review these, and they're available if there are questions. The Small Community Grant, population up to twenty thousand or less, can give a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. It requires a hundred fifty thousand dollar match. That one would be a little easier to compete. The Non-Urban Outdoor is five hundred thousand or less population, and it's up to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, requires a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar match. The Non-Urban Outdoor, they said, is a little bit more, uh, higher competition because it's every community in the state except for eighteen cities of larger than that. The Small Community this last year, I looked at their awards, and they awarded, uh, half, fifty percent got awards in the Small Community Grant, like ten out of twenty got awards. The Non-Urban Outdoor, there are like thirty-two, thirty applications, ten got awards, so you got a thirty-three percent shot. And you just got to, you got to pay attention to the rating criteria and try to like make sure you're hitting the, the things for them. So the significant thing is that for that match, apart from just cash, they'll allow you to do an in-kind match, and they'll allow you to use the value of land that's not previously dedicated as parkland for the city. Next slide.
One more time. The match.
For the match, they'll allow you to use in-kind as the match, which, um, which could be like man-hours, if you had that many man-hours. It could be volunteer hours. It could also be cash, if, if there are private grants written that had matching funds to commit, or that, that will also allow you to use land that has not been dedicated, property that's never been dedicated, platted, managed, or acquired for public park or recreation use. And I think this might require just a line of research, but I think the land that y'all have, that would include phase two, phase three, and some of the other spaces, were acquired by the city because of the FEMA indication and not for the purpose of that. But like somebody. Maybe Adrian and I met with Dan Reese, who was the Lockwood Parks and Wildlife Department. And I'll show you a slide at the very end. There were, there, phase one has three parcels. Two of those are undeveloped and just overgrown right now. And when we were showing that to him on aerial map, his, his kind of read, just looking from looking at the picture, is that those two parcels could probably be used as match value because they haven't been placed in the park use, as long as it's not officially, and it really hasn't been named anything on phase one, which kind of suggests, I wonder. Next slide. So, um, eligible applicants, cities, next slide. Eligible cost, acquisition, reconstruction, renovation, professional services up to twelve percent of the cost. That's, that's not us. That's not going to be me, I think, depending what the project is, because you aren't going to have those folks hired. I think if we, if we did a do-it-yourself application, I, if there's any construction piece of that, we want to put some in there for the professional use, if it was an acquisition project. Um, I think you need to do what makes sense related to that. Uh, next slide.
Is this for both grants?
This applies to both grants, both eligible for that. The Small Community Grant has state funds are the origin, the non-Urban is federal funds are the origin. So in that implementation, they're going to have a little bit of different rules when you get into it.
Quick question.
So they're trying to keep it simple.
Did they say that the, um, professional services can include things like medicare taking of the grounds?
We didn't ask that specifically. I think it's mostly the things like, um, the engineering, landscape architects, the design, and generally from other types of grants, any of the ongoing stuff beyond that cycle is not going to be. So that is something to think about, like whatever you're doing, making sure you've got the maintenance plan for it. That is actually part of the scope of writing the grant. It's how are we going to take care of that so, so good later? These are just pictures of things that you can do. So, um, and one, one little line that he dropped, Dan Reese dropped in the interview, or the discussion we had with him last week, was those non-Urban ones to compete with the large cities. Um, they're going to tend to have more types of things in an app. And so if y'all applied a year from now for that seven hundred fifty thousand grant, I think having different types of things in the grant may be something that looks good to them. And so rainwater gardens, swales, native landscaping paths, ADA paths, pavilions, and then shade, shaved cloth over the Allen Bates Playground has been mentioned recently also. So there's some good, good things there. Um, pictures, all these are in their website. If anybody wants to see the full thing, or, uh, they've got also a two-and-a-half-hour recording of a presentation about this one there. They've got also two and a half hour recording of a presentation about this one there and more information. Applications, August first, awards, January. If it's state funded, just small communities, there's four years of implementation, three years of federal implementation. One thing that we asked him if there is if there was any penalty or thing that would count against if you applied this year and wanted to play again next year. And they said there's not. And they actually had many communities that have multiple grants going at the same time. So if if there was a decision to like attempt something in the short run, it wouldn't count against you next year. It's either a practice run if it doesn't work, or it's a if you get something. Next slide. This is not from Parks and Wildlife. This is from, these are the parcels in that area of town that are what City of Markendale owns. I think mostly because of that flood mitigation buyout. The parts in green are Allen Bates Park that goes down the river. And then the part of phase one, river access, that is actually has the trails and parking and port of potty down there. The other parcels by that are the ones that are overgrown, has phase two, phase three. I think that one in the middle is called the Cochran property. And then there's some others around the edges there. Something that I don't have perspective on in a distance, but I think might be worth considering. I think it's essentially a voluntary transaction if any of those parcels that are between Allen Bates and Phase One ever become part of the city park. Man, I think that's probably up to the folks that have that. And it's probably what they have is probably pretty special to some people when values are growing up. If then if anyone ever decided to donate any of that land, because you could, just looking at the map, you could see how fifteen or twenty years from now. It'd be really neat if that was all City of Markendale Park from Allen Bates to Phase One. But that's not our decision to make for other people. If someone wanted to donate that land at some point and that made sense to them to not have the taxes or something. That donation of land could also be counted as in kind match toward these kind of grants in the future. So it's something to keep in mind for later on. I don't know that the dollars are enough to to fit the right things for acquisition of that land. But I think that's the other thing for consideration in the short timeline is if there was any part of that 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 one of those. Grants or if somebody's willing to like kind of donate parts and like sell part or work something out. If there are those kind of conversations. If you don't have to have acquired the land before a grant application. You have to have just a letter of intent to either sell or donate the property. And that can say if a grant is awarded, so it could be, I intend to if a grant is awarded. But for an application, you need some real estate professional to make a judgment on the value of that or state something. It doesn't have to be a full appraisal. They said you don't need the full appraisal unless a grant is awarded. And they can't pay for that and the city would have to pay for the appraisal or somebody would. But you don't need that before beforehand.
But would they use the Caldwell CAD, the appraisal district numbers?
I actually asked that when we were on the call with him, because that's what we've been just looking at for ballpark, you know, knowing. And they said, that's a good starting place, but you really want that real estate person to take a look at it and at least have some comparable sales or values, even though it's not an appraisal. Because they don't want to make a grant and then it not be good enough to get the deal done. But I think that's why that that letter of intent with with someone beforehand is important too, that they're that they're willing to. But I think that's something that's is kind of beyond our volunteer capacity as adjacent to the city. So I think if there is interest in exploring the artist first, like is there some small scope that's worth applying or not? Because you don't have to do the hundred fifty thousand. It's kind of like the things that have been mentioned. I think the learning fruit would be like, is there anything around that acquisition that the timing is right for anything? And if it is, it could just step ahead for planning in that next year for future work. If not, it's not right now. Beyond that, things that have been mentioned a lot are ADA access. And so is there anything in a small scope that could get cost estimates or done and just see if it works and try to write the best grant application we can? And see if we can get that at one of the sites, because having been at both Allen Bates and the others, it's really not, it's really not accessible. Or even just like putting something in like a shade cloth grant. And then I think we may try for some private foundation stuff also checking on that. So it's a flurry of stuff. If there was interest, I think could come back with kind of like an option A, option B at that July twentieth. And decide if y'all wanted to do a resolution. If not, I'm conscious there's a lot of thing on city clerks and city managers plates and like not wanting to add stuff.
I was going to say something about the map. I think that all of from that triangle where you have face. Phase two and phase three as one phase, actually, the other phase is the big white portion, I thought, of the Guadalupe gravel pit there. That that's, isn't that another phase like?
Yeah, I think I think.
I think I think you have it to where you've got two and three in the same parcel. And that three should be actually on the other side of nineteen seventy nine.
On that one.
Because, yeah, because phase two is all of Al Hollow and the triangle. And then the other phase is the larger portion there. That's the Guadalupe County pit that's between the Callaway property and the Cochran property. So just put three over there. Is 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 that right? I get two and three confused.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
And three should go on the Cochran property here?
Uh, no, it's just that that.
That section.
So what's currently says phase two and three, that's all phase two. And then the section that's not colored in would be phase three.
This would be phase three?
Yeah.
I didn't even know that.
When we do our mowing orders and other things, it's something, it gets a little convoluted, but we. And that's that was what we presented the council a while back, was that. That phase approach to development.
You scroll down. Yeah, there it is. So that's the one, you can barely see the orange lines there, but those are those three parcels in phase one. Where you can really see looking at that those two on that west northwest side are are just not developed right now. Like the road and the parking is all really in that lowermost portion. So the thing that I handed out to you, there's a shape that has just the Caldwell County appraisal district value on those Markendale properties. And within that. The lower section is all the ones that aren't Allen Bates and aren't that are developed for everyone access. And I I think even with this year's values, you've got enough for a match for a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant at some point. And enough for a match for a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. Those values are going to keep going up probably, I would assume, over over time. So I think I think that's just significant for working. And it seems like a way that the state has given flexibility for smaller communities that don't have that kind of funding in the bank to give a match.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but thank thank you and Laura for doing the questionnaire, very explicit and great questions about. What do you like about the river? What do you like about the city? And 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 you gave a lot of space beneath the question to answer, so that it it was great. I'm looking forward to filling it out. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the wastewater report. Yeah.
How's everybody doing? I'm going to start off with a summary. I'll go the other way. I used to start with a puff image of summary this time. We uh, we had one issue there at the ordinance like for the end of the month. I think it was either a, it was either a power glitch or something that happened there. Cause it's going to a high level. We took care of that. I think, but I think, but like, I think that a that a board on the telemetry got got fired or something. They never cared. That's what I'm going to look into. I'm going to call the phone technologies at least tomorrow and just had a telemetry. And also the medicine, this station, we had no issues there. I still waiting on that part. I called that guy the other day on that.
Real quick, the telemetry, that's the remote signal that we receive for remote monitoring of alarms.
That's right. And I'm still waiting on that part for that medicine, this station, and mini case.
Okay.
Also at the main, this station, we had, I had no issue with that. We still have some items that we got to correct there at some point. So I won't go over them because y'all are familiar with it, with those things. And at the Markville monster from the wastewater, we we started to irrigate again. We pumped about fifty five thousand gallons. And then we also did some recirculating to break up the the algeal blooms, I guess. Right now, the the sun is pretty hot, it's kind of intense. That goes a lot of, a lot of the air out of the wastewater. And also we collected the monthly BOD sample and also checked the pH data. The pH been mid range, eight, three, eight, five, eight, six. So it's a, my jersey the other day, all this stuff we're putting in, there's a process, takes a little bit of time.
So it seems, it seems like it's coming down a little bit.
Yes. Also, we put a little bit of rain because the rain helps out the atmosphere when the water falls in. Adds a little more air to the ponds. And also the record all their influence, the readings, calculated the influence. Uh, reasons, check the pH status on the ponds. Yeah, check all the wire and the panels, controls and all that. And like I said, we started that that Aqua Fix mixture in there. It seemed like it was up about six inches of, since then. You know, and it's, like I said, it's either some of it be evaporations, some of it may be a the chemical working on the. On the ponds, on the sludge. And we did drop the ponds, so about me two, we got like two and a half feet of free board. But we're trying to get ready for the winter, because once you get into the wet season, it gets, it gets not hard to irrigate. Working on that. And at very bottom, there's some other items that I've been working on, I guess, at the end of the sewer lines. I guess, was to give me a quote in the sewer lines in the fall sometime. And also we made the tab for Mr. Penelli there. And we got two quotes for the eleven taps.
I had a question about that. So you're going to have eleven sewer lines that, are they going to come individually from each lot going to the sewer line? That that that's one question. Or could you consolidate them? Does the whole road have to be closed while you're doing this?
Most likely is. If we're going to block traffic, we're going to have an open trench.
And we're voting tonight on commercial vehicles not going on Quail Run. If if Quail Run is not having commercial vehicles on it, where do you assume then the vehicles will come? To do those kind of digging and putting in the gravel and all that? Will they come from eighty or or?
Well, you're talking about the contractor or?
Sam, we'll talk about that when we get to that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's in the in the plan. You know, the the road is is going to have to be closed, though.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you need me to stick around for that, okay. Or do y'all have any?
No.
Do y'all have any questions? Y'all always get to contact me.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
No problem. And then I got a, let's see, I got another revised quote here about the generator. Here for the cash reports.
Good.
I told the mayor, can I consider we get into hurricane season? Got to hear something.
That's right.
So hopefully we won't, but you always want to be ready for that.
Hopefully we do.
And then we irrigated about fifty five thousand gallons this month. And we uh, we averaged about eighteen hundred gallons. And we landed a flat up there. Grounds there. Then the maximum that we irrigated was ten thousand eight hundred gallons. And the minimum was four thousand one hundred gallons. So I'm going to do the, now again, I'm going to do the annual, I guess, how much water we pumped into the wastewater plant. We pumped about a million, thirty thousand, eighty four gallons. We averaged about forty one thousand and two gallons per day. It came up a little bit, it seems that, it seems kind of, we're averaging about thirty five thousand, I think, at some point. And the maximum growth for the month was a hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy eight gallons. And the the minimum was twenty seven thousand, seventy eight gallons. And Mayor, I did make contact with that gentleman on the on that part that we need for the for the spring.
Oh, good.
I left him a voicemail. Anybody else have a, anything for me?
Thank you so much, Pete.
Yeah. But have you ever heard any questions about that, about that project there on the road? I thought about other things, you know, just, yeah. And I understand your concerns too.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we'll talk about it now. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to new business here. Kind of new business. We've talked about the city council getting approval to write an ordinance to control truck traffic on Quail Run. And so now we've got that ordinance written and it's in your packet here. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Yeah, I have a question because I know that there is some concerns about the stop sign that it isn't there at Northwest River Road and Quail Run. And I explained to you in a little detail the other day about that. And I think the problem that brought this on perhaps was either. The commercial vehicles going from Quail Run to Northwest Road and taking the stop sign out. But also there was a vehicle with bricks or something that went across the Skull Bridge itself. I think we do need to fix the stop sign, though, there. And and the Quail Run, though, has been paved recently. And so it is one of the most durable roads we have. The the potholes going from, say, Skull Bridge up Northwest River Road to eighty are immense. I mean, it's like you, you have to almost see the car coming towards you and then either pull over and stop and let the other car go beside you. So I have concerns if we close commercial traffic to Quail Run, that then we will have more traffic on Northwest Road. From Highway eighty where the Bagley House is and that the Northwest Road cannot take traffic. It's it's getting beat up from the tubing vehicles and and the buses. And I I would like to see us fix the intersection of Quail Run and Northwest Road to where to accommodate these vehicles. And if we don't want commercial vehicles to go to the Skull Bridge, then let's put no commercial vehicles. At the beginning of the two roads that go down to the bridge. And that's what I initially am saying, is there any other? See, because there, that is.
Catherine, Catherine cannot speak. Catherine cannot speak.
Just finish real, real, real quick, Mike. That intersection there that was knocked down, that is railroadized and T post and the.
That's what I was going to talk about.
Okay.
Okay, let me say something just a minute, please. Wait a minute, Mike. Let's look at this as a whole. I'm going to have Chief Ward come in here because let's look at the whole problem, all three of these things together. What what had happened in one of the workshops is. Mayor Devini had said, you know, this is a problem and we need to look at it. And so we're trying to look at it as a whole problem. So and then we tried to break it up. So we've got Quail Run with the big trucks coming out. And one of the things that we would like to do is put the stop sign back up, but it keeps getting knocked down. And it's hundreds of dollars every time we have to put it up. But put a stop sign before Quail Run and then put another stop sign at the other end of the Y. So that we have a three way stop. This is going to stop a lot of the traffic and slow it down. Because we do have a lot of swimmers that are using this area. And so if we control parking and we control the traffic. That's what what we're trying to do tonight. Do you have anything to say, Chief Ward?
So I think it's a safety issue. I agree with you, Sam, with some of the stuff you said, as far as Skull Road being our most durable road.
I mean, well.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be, Quail Run, sorry, Quail Run, but it's not going to be if we continue to let trucks come down. It's just going to get eaten up the same way. You're just, they're just heavy and going to eat that road up. They're going to eat that side every time they turn there. And it's not just big trucks, but we can stop some of that with the big trucks, right?
Good. You got to think about where are they going? What are the big trucks doing?
What are the big trucks doing? They're cutting across Skull, Skull Road to get to six-twenty-one. I mean, that's pretty much.
Yes, sir.
I mean, what, what else are they doing? They're not gonna be going, Sam, you're worried about them going north to, to Westford Road, but they don't go down that road already. They're going down the bridge to get to six-twenty-one.
Yes, sir.
And that, if we put no commercial vehicles on Quail Run, they're, they're gonna be forced to go to one-ten, which is what we wanted to do. And we don't have to worry about any of this.
Yes, sir.
So then we can put the, we can put the stop sign back up, we don't have to worry about doing a three-way stop there. And, I mean, Northwest River Road is just gonna be a project. Something we're gonna have to deal with.
These guys are just pulling their phone out and it's telling them, like it does me, hey, Quail Run. And we all know that that's a, a, a trap. And we're trying to eliminate the, the trap.
So, well, that road is, I just got an accident on it last week. I mean, I, there was Pope, I couldn't see going, I was going out on eighty, this is my new, but I couldn't see. So I, I pulled up just a little bit and this previous comes right, right in front of me and I hit it. And it's my fault, but I was like, man, this is, this is a dangerous road right there. And then we also have that, that guard rail gets hit five times a year. Five times a year at least, you know? So we don't need commercial, we don't need commercial vehicles on Quail Run. And I think one of your concerns, Sam, was that, you know, how the commercial vehicle is gonna get to those? How are they gonna get to the, the Northwest River Road when we're doing all that? Probably, well, I mean, if they have a destination to go to, then they can go on to the, that Quail Run.
This is just a no through traffic. No through traffic.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to do. You dark, they gave us a great photo of a semi.
Yeah, that's.
Make, make, make it, uh, make him, you know, going towards the river, make it a right.
Yeah.
And trying to go and they can't, and they take out the stop sign. There's not enough room there. There's just.
No, they don't need to be on Northwest River Road. They need to just go to one-ten like, and I, I don't know. I don't know if us putting up signs is gonna make Google Maps tell these truck drivers go a different way, but I'm sure there's, we have no through traffic on there. I mean, as long as we have it, we have to be, be able to enforce it. That's pretty much, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's fine. You know, you said everything.
Yeah.
So the other thing on the stop sign, we're talking, talking to the mayor, uh, get a breakaway sign so that we have a post put in there really good in the ground. And if they do hit it on the top, the top knocks that top over and we're not having to replace and dig down every single time, uh, to do that. So that's another.
What about putting a stop sign on? It's just, I can't put on both sides of there. Anyway.
We're gonna, we're gonna be talking about more of that in a minute.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Step one.
Yeah.
Step one is trying to, yeah, stop the truck traffic.
And to answer some of your question, like, like just stopping it right there on the top side of that little, um, wall area, it's gonna do no good if, if we stop it on our side, but while the county does. So we'd have to work with Waterloo County and get them to stop it on their end of Quail Run as our excuse shooting me on Skull Road, on their end of Skull Road as well, make no blue trucks on that whole road. So we can work with them and get that taken care of.
Think about the other side.
Well, this, this, this is something you can then take to the county and say, look, we're doing this for.
We're doing this on our end and we can have discussions.
Yeah, we'd like, we'd like to, we'd send someone there to the county and say, we need to, please help us with this.
Yes, sir.
So this is step one.
So if a, a, a commercial vehicle is coming from eighty and going down Quail Run and say they have to dig trenches for the meters and the sewers and all that, that's the destination.
Correct.
That's not through traffic, that's.
But they can still use, use Quail Run then?
Right. If they go, they're going to the business on Quail Run, if, if a big truck is gonna go move somebody that's, lives in the apartments there and they get a big truck to come and move them, then, then they can go there. It's a destination.
This is, this is through traffic only.
So is the sign gonna say no commercial vehicles for through traffic?
It says no through traffic. And, and that's better than, all the truckers know that. They know what it means.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Did you have something to say?
Yes, yes. My point is Quail Run is our best road, correct. But if you, remember that picture I took of that, uh, eighteen wheeler that took the stop that was, that was crap? That blocked Quail Run and blocked Northwest River Road? If you look at the edge of Quail Run, they are destroying that road. They're knocking those, those, those post, those, uh, landscape timbers. And they're also, they're just tearing up the asphalt on that edge. That road is starting to fail and that's my point. Quail Run, not Northwest, but Quail Run.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think three weeks ago, I don't, I don't think a police was called for this. It was like seven o'clock in the morning and there was a kid with his nose in a ditch just sitting there waiting for his dad to come pull him out.
Oh, dear.
And luckily the stop sign wasn't there, cause he would've gone right through the stop sign. And I was like, you all right? He just looked at me. My dad's on the way. I was like, all right, you wanna do anything? He's like, no. I'm saying, all right. It's everybody, man.
Yeah, the, there's not much earth though, right there where the stop sign is to even put a breakaway sign in. It's, it's almost like you have to either bring the sign up farther from the intersection or you're gonna have to extend the culvert that's there and put dirt over it. Because if you look down from where the stop sign is there, it's just a sheer drop off there and it's probably about four, four feet down. So I would recommend if we're gonna put the stop sign back is to bring it closer up or a little bit away from that corner.
I think that's a good idea to bring the culvert back a little bit more.
Well, I know you, you got a bid for the improvement.
Eighty-five hundred. Just to do that corner.
Kind of said, if we, if we bring it back any further, we have to make sure that at some point in time we clear that, uh, intersection or clear all that brush because no one can see exactly what's gonna happen. They're, they're gonna stop back further and then just have to keep inching further and further and further just to be able to see. So we need to clear that and then put a designated stop line.
Yeah.
So, yeah, do you have a? Well, I, I mean, no, I think that what everybody has said, it's, I mean, you know, it's true. We do need to fix a stop sign. There are a lot of accidents. It is a safety hazard, so, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement.
So can I make the motion then?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh-seven dash oh-six, which is, uh, ordinance by the City of Martindale regulating through traffic of commercial vehicles on Quail Run Road from Texas Highway eighty, uh, through to Northwest River Road?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing done. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Mike?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we'll go on to the next item. Um, we need to talk about turning this whole triangle, we do have the title for the property now. Um, into parkland is the suggestion. So it just depends on whatever the city council wants. The reason that we're talking about turning it into parkland is, um, then the parkland would extend to the city and the police have more control over that whole area, the river and the parking area. And all of the, um, the things that we have in place for the parks, like the can ban and alcohol, no alcohol and all of those rules that we've worked so hard here in the last few months to pass would apply to this area also.
Uh, Catherine cannot speak?
Yes.
Uh, Ca- Catherine, you know, Mark with the Community Unlimited Group, he made a point about, uh, having grants and, you know, phase one, phase two. And, you know, Sonia and I have been here more than anybody and Sonia and myself are the ones that, that changed city land to parkland. So without Sonia and I, this discussion would have never happened about grants. So that's why it's so critical that we, as a council and a community, dedicate as much parkland as possible. And so we've got phase one, we've got phase two, we're working on cochrane. We're getting the land and we're working on grants. So we just might as well continue that with, uh, the skulls of property. And one more point, if you could bring up that ordinance that was passed, what, ten years ago? With a previous city council, when, uh, I believe TRPA was, gave what, twenty-three thousand dollars to the city of Martindale to acquire land for Allen Bates. And that was discussed way back then. And one more point, that, that place right there is where paddlers, fishermen, people swimming have been there, have been going there for years. And it's probably the most, most, uh, most popular stretch of river from Pecan Park to Skulls is that section. So we need to have a park so we can have fishermen, canoeers and people to use that access. And that's, that's my speech.
Um, okay, I'm gonna say something because I'm a parks guy. I'm, I'm pretty much against this. Uh, I've seen multiple, like twenty cars parked along the road because they are not parking in the parking lot. People are walking down, down those steep, narrow roads to the river and they're trespassing on everyone else's property, on Scott Jecker's property, on the Brombells' property and on the land, future Dreamland Lanzola property. There are people there that are there for extended periods of time in the river, leaving garbage. And since we have no porta potty and no garbage, uh, pickup there, they're doing multiple physical things, I'm sure they're urinating, defecating, leaving garbage, diapers. Uh, and it's just not a safe place. The Brombells have set up a conservation easement with Texas Parks and Wildlife to give boaters and kayakers access to the river. That is currently in place. If you look at the butterfly, dedicated butterfly park, if you look at that steepness of that slope and how much poison oak is there and how many dead chinaberry trees are there? A butterfly is about the only thing that could exist on that hillside. I'm not, I'm not finished yet, Mike. No, no, I'm, I'm, I got the floor now. I'm almost done. That, that the butterfly park is so steep and there is no riverbank down there for people to go to. If we dedicate that to a park, people are still gonna be trespassing and we're encouraging people to trespass on everyone else's private property. We have an easement set up, a conservation easement. I think we should keep the parking lot closed. Well, I proved to you tonight that we are having problem even maintaining the parks that we have now. We are not properly maintaining the parks. We don't have a maintenance plan. The porta potties are disgusting.
Cannot speak, cannot speak.
I'm not done yet. I'm almost done, Mike. And so because of this, I would like us to agenda, I mean, to table this until the next fiscal year and not have people parking there. And if we start charging Park Mobile in our parks, you know that everybody's gonna come here. So we need to put the tow away signs on Northwest Road so people don't park there. People don't go to the river and trespass and, and pollute the river even more so than it's getting polluted now with suntan lotion, with urine, with garbage.
Can I speak?
Just a minute.
I'm almost done. I'm, I'm, yes, you can. But I am totally against this and I think we should table it until the next fiscal year. It's not safe for the public. It's not safe for the river. We have an easement set up and that's how I feel about it. I'm totally against it.
Okay, Mike.
Okay, you made your point, Mr. Clinton. Here, here you go. Well, how is it now? It's out of control now. We've got, we can make it parkland, therefore we can have a can ban, we can prohibit alcohol. That conservation easement will not work. It's way too small. There's no way you can pull a trailer in there. You cannot put a raft in there. You cannot put a raft in there. They're the only place those fishermen can park is on the side of the road. Okay, so you're gonna shut that down. So we as a city are gonna shut one of the most popular sections of river, rafting, paddling and fishing. It's been there for fifty years and we're gonna just shut it down? That's not right. And, 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 and I'm no, Sonia and myself are the ones that got the park started. And that's an extension of our parkland. And yes, you can have access there and there is an, there is a safety issue now. Right now, there's a problem with trash and you can't, you can't say a word about me. I'm a can ban man. I'm a river guy and I'm against trash and polluting the river. But this is a good thing for the Martindales, for giving us revenue for parking. And it's a safety issue and we need to keep it available for the people to use. But it has to be regulated and that's why we have paid parking, a can ban and a, and a alcohol ban. There's my point.
Um, I'm gonna refu- and reference ordinance two thousand eleven, April first is what, uh, Mike was referring to. And so the city council has been trying to fix the problem at Skull, at the Skull Triangle for a long time. Now, this ordinance, since that was private land, um, dealt with rebuilding the bridge and then trying to control the traffic. So it, it says, "An ordinance of the city council of the city of Martindale, Texas, amending the parking schedules of the city to regulate the parking of vehicles in the area of Skull Crossing, providing a penalty for the violations, including procedural provisions and providing an effective date." So they were just trying to say that it was a loading and unloading area. And, um, in appreciation for the paddlers don't, uh, collecting and donating twenty-three thousand dollars so the city could buy the land that is now Allen Bates Park. That was just part of the money. The city did write this ordinance. And so that's part of what Mike is referring to, that he feels that the city needs to honor what the paddlers have done for that area.
So, how many? I, I mean, I drive by that pretty much every morning at six-thirty, seven o'clock. And there's maybe two, three wrapped, uh, trailer, trailers for raps there. It's never any more than that. And there's plenty of room in that, uh, what, what are we calling that?
The island.
Well, there's plenty of room at the, uh, I'm blanking out.
The Texas Parks and Wildlife parking area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's plenty of room for them to pull in there. Um, I haven't seen one vehicle in there yet, cause there's no signage, no one knows of this down there. I would personally feel more comfortable using that as a paddler that my, my car is not just vacant for anybody to roll by. If I have a gate behind me, I'd be way more, and it's free, you know? Um, I don't see it deterring paddlers away. People who are making a living are gonna like the fact that they can just park their car in a gated parking lot. They just don't know it's there and they don't know it's available. They need to, there needs to be signs so that people know it's available. Um, and it will limit the amount of people who are going down to that crossing. I think that's super important because this last weekend, there was eighty people down there.
Yeah.
And there's trash everywhere and we don't have anybody to pick that trash up. And it's, I mean, that's just the case of it. And I, I understand your frustration with it, Mike, but I think we do need to put.
Well, you know, let me, let me speak. Let me speak. I'm the only paddler in this whole group.
No, that's not.
No, 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 I'm saying, no, I've, I've done paddling for, let me finish. Okay, that, you cannot pull a trailer into that, that conservation easement. I backed up trailer, that, but, but there's two points here. There's the first point is about the park. That's what we're talking about right now. We're not talking about parking, we're talking about a park.
What?
And this is what I'm talking about. Let, let me finish. Let me finish. We're talking about a park where we can regulate.
Where's the park?
Let me, can I finish? Can you let me speak, please? Instead of interrupting me? I'm telling you, we regulate it like we've done and Sonia knows exactly what I'm talking about. We do the can ban and we have, we have, we have the authority with the police to charge and to regulate what happens there. Plus it's revenue to give to our coppers, to clean the toilets and to clean up the trash. And I'm telling you guys, mark my words, if we shut that down for the paddlers and the fishermen or, and the, whoever, we shut down access, it's gonna be a big problem. Cause that's been there for fifty years. And I'll leave it at that.
There's no, there's no park land for us to go pick up on. If we'd have to, have to go trespass on other people's land to go pick up trash.
No, you don't.
That's not our, it's not our park.
No, you don't have to, you don't, you're not trespassing. That goes totally.
Wait.
But if, if the issue is regarding establishing rules or calling it a park, we might be able to achieve the policy aims of quote-unquote establishing a park without calling it a park. It's city-owned property. We can establish the rules and according to city-owned property without designating it a park.
I'm re- I'm ready to go. Whenever everybody's gonna just zip it for a little bit, then I'm gonna, I'm ready. So whenever everybody's ready to pour it, then I'm ready to go.
What do you, what are you gonna go for? What do you?
I liked what, uh, what Jared said though, the, the fact where. I liked what, uh, what Jared said though, that the fact we're asking, do you want to turn it into a park? But if we don't, it's, it's now city property. And we have, we don't have it on the agenda to say, should we charge for parking there or not? All we are asking is should we turn it into parkland? And if you don't want to turn it into parkland, it's still city property.
Well, let's, let's remember too about the memorial that's there and the two persons were killed there because of a drug deal gone bad. There's no lighting there. I have tried before to ask for a trans, a transformer to have lighting there. But it was only recently in the last few years when Lanzola bought all this property that we finally found out that it was private property and it has been private property ever since Conrad owned it. And, 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 and so people got used to using it in the manner that it is being used, not only for paddlers, but for people that beach there, sit in the middle of the river and leave garbage. It is an unsafe area to be.
So you don't want anybody using that Ori at all? That's your preference?
No, I.
Nobody should be allowed to.
No, not nobody. I think that pe- people that are on kayaks and boats and fishermen, there is an easement there where they can back in, which Nick mentioned, where you can safely back in and take your kayak off and then drive up to where they have established a place for them to park. It is small, but I would think eventually they would expand.
Only kayakers and paddlers could use it.
That's it. That's it.
The purpose of this, the purpose of this was not to have people wading in the water. Okay, the purpose of this whole concept, this previous resolution was for loading and unloading. There's actually a loading and unloading only sign that's convoluted and twisted around on Shill Road because it's been hit. I don't know, I don't know how many times. Um, and it's been twisted around. It's loading and unloading. The people started going to that for beach purposes when the parks got closed down for COVID. We need those people to stop going there and go to the parks again.
But if we have a parking lot, they're going to park there.
I know. I've been waiting a while when I tried to politely interject.
Oh, I thought you were ready to make a motion.
No.
Okay.
Hey, I'm not on Zoom, man. I don't need to raise my hand to talk. I just say politely.
Okay, so then what I wanted to say is that, um, I mean, I hear Mike and I hear Sam. And I mean, the reason why I love Martindale is we do have amazing parks and we do have a plan. But yet we as a city, we've put into the forefront, like protecting our dark skies. We have done, you know, everything that we have done because we want to highlight our, you know, our environment. And I think what a perfect place to showcase our environment and show that we are environmentally conscious and aware and we need a conservation area. I think that that would be a perfect place to put signs, "River access this way, 1.1 mile, Bays whatever, Allen Bates Park, River access 2.2 miles." Whatever that park is going to be called. Uh, uh, canoe and raft parking with the QR code for the Texas Parks and Wildlife right there. We're not pe- telling people that they cannot swim. We're telling them that this is a conservation area where there is like, we're trying to encourage the natural habitat, the wildlife, uh, growth, everything in that area to see how it is. I believe that the property owners that have the peninsula there will do the same thing as far as like, you know, protected habitat area. Because I know that right now that whole area is being trampled on. Um, I have seen, uh, like pits down there, barbecue pits going. And, uh, there is a lot of stuff. And what are we saying as a city when we don't have any conservation area? Showing that we're just saying, come and enjoy our parks. Come and what Sam is saying, trash in our parks. Si- Sam showed me pictures. I, I had a nightmare. I'm serious. I did. I had a nightmare. I was traumatized. And thank you, Sam, for cleaning them. And I hear my council member, Mike McClabb, which I do have, you know, tremendous respect for because he is. And I think that with this area, that if we were to clean it up, we would be able to use some of our funding that we need to promote tourism, historical district. This way we can encourage our butterfly, uh, you know, growth that's there. But when it is like specifically designated as a parkland that does encourage certain behaviors, all it has to do is in the verbiage. If it's a conservation area, in my mind, that says, okay, they're being environmentally conscious. If I want to be a, you know, whatever, and I'm going to go trample on that ground. Hey, you know what? The universe is going to handle you when you could just drive a little bit further down and you could go down here. Now, I think the parking, I think, you know, the little pillars that they did around this door to not have the parking there. If we did some nice pillars around there, not to encourage the parking, we're able to utilize some of our funds for some, uh, nice signs and encouraging them where to go, maybe putting some information about the wildlife habitat that there, that there is, the plants, the butterflies that are being attracted. I think this is a prime opportunity for Martindale to showcase their, uh, you know, being, uh, conservationist with the environment, but also sending people to our highlights of our city, which are our parks. Because we don't have an area like that yet.
Can I say one more, can I say one more thing?
Just a minute, Nick was talking. Just a minute. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we just voted on a tow company last, last meeting. And they're going to be able to put signs up and enforce those signs. So, I mean, that's kind of the point of the having those signs.
And I think, you know, like on the sides of the road, like the way that they're parking, I think when Lanzola has their, you know, their residents that are there, their homeowners, whoever's going to be there, they are not going to want the, you know, people to be parking all in front of those homes. We have not crossed that bridge yet, but yet you think about stuff that may happen in the future. And that could be, but I feel like we as a city need to do something in order to say we care about our environment. We care about our natural habitat. Here's a prime opportunity for us to do that.
So are you saying with the parking lot?
Can I talk? Can I talk please? It's my turn. I speak please, Mr. Clinton?
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, Sonia, for your question is about go to our Allen Bates Park. The problem is a lot of paddlers and the fishermen, they don't want to go over the dam. That's the problem because they have to portage the dam, which is a very hazardous thing. Because you got that low water bridge, there's rocks in there and there's safety issues. So, and back to that conservation easement. I'm a canoeer. I pull canoe trailers. That's on top of a hill. It's a blind hill. It's going to be impossible to put a trailer in there and to, to get into that little area. If that conservation easement was bigger, possibly so. But the problem is you've got University of Texas, you've got A and M with canoe trailers, you've got fishermen with trailers. The best place to put a trailer is on that road. Now, we have a discussion tonight. It's not about shutting the road down. It's about making it a park. And that's what we're talking about. And that's what we're talking about. And we do that, we're going to open up the Hornets desk because people have been using that parking for 50 years. And if we have a tow away zone on the side of the road, we're going to tow vehicles off. There's no places for people to park their vehicles, especially a trailer in that little bitty conservation easement that might hold seven or eight cars. We, we got more than that using that thing. It's just not right. And it's, and, and you know what? We're going back on our word as a city. We, the TRPA gave $23,000 for that, just for the access of Skulls. And now we're going to say we're not a, we're not a city of our word. And that's the only reason Allen Bates is there because TRPA and people donated and the county made, made the first park. And that's, that, I think we're making a huge mistake. All we're saying, dedicate parkland, and I'll leave it at that.
Mike, I don't think you understood what Sonia was saying. She's saying honor the ordinance from 2011. And discourage the swimmers, but let the paddlers still have access there.
Onload, yeah, unload and load.
We don't want that parking on our side of the group.
Well, I mean, like if, if, if it came down to it, like, you know, right there, if, if it says, if you've only put aside one trailer, like we don't, you know, there's only parking there for them to do it the way that they should. For how many trailers? Two, three?
I mean, I've seen, I've seen. I see two or three.
Can I speak? Can I speak?
You've, you've been going at it, buddy. Let's go.
Okay, thank you. You could, would you shut the road down? You could park trailers down that road with, with trucks and trailers on the road for loading, unloading. That's what it was originally was for the ordinance. Now, you could on the park, you could on the parking lot, you could not put a trailer there. Or you could, you could unhook the trailer, park it in a spot and then park the car or the truck next to it. That way they could have their trailer, but they'd have to unhook it. Like I'm saying is, that's always been a takeout point. It's, I gotta, I gotta stress that to you. And the paddlers, TRPA, Tom Gollins, Virginia Parker, all of them, we're paddlers and we, and we love the river. And that's why I, I became a council member because I want to protect the river. So nobody can tell me that I'm not for the river and protecting the river. I am for it 100%. But we need, if we have, if we have, if we have parkland, we have protection. We have protection for can ban and we have a protection for alcohol.
That's not true.
And another point, let me speak, let me finish and I'm done. Another point is, we can't stop people from going down there. If they walk there, they can walk down there and do whatever. We cannot close access off to a river. They can park, they could, if we don't have a parkland, they can walk down there as much as they want to do. So there you go. There's my speech.
Then Mike, how much of the budget would you like to see go towards making that into a conducive parkland? How much money are you willing to take out of the budget to do that?
We don't need to take money out of the budget because we charge for parking. You go down there, there's sometimes 30 vehicles down there. One time at July 4th, that's 300 bucks. It could be self-supported, like all this.
Mike, do you remember my comment I said about pimping out our river? When I'm trying to talk about conservation? Okay, let's get that.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about revenue. I'm talking about revenue. I'm talking about having parking. I'm just saying, you're going to, you're going to get the, you're going to get the paddlers upset. Okay, I'm upset. I think it's a huge mistake, but I'm, I'm, I'm done. It's my speech.
Let, let's get back on track. What's on, what's on the table is, should we turn this into parkland or not?
I'm going to make a motion that we convert Skull Property Lot 125083 and 121888 to parkland.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Y'all voted down.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion.
You guys go right ahead.
You know what? And it shouldn't be about pissing off the paddlers.
It is. There's no parking on that. If you, I've been over there. You cannot get, Mike is right. You cannot get a trailer in that.
Look, I listen, I talked to the landowners. I talked to landowners today. I talked to Virginia Parker today. They're, they're for not turning that into parkland. And they want, they want to use that parking lot for the paddlers. And they're open to making.
I think you're, I think you're mistaken. I talked to Virginia also. She's 100% in shutting that road down. I've talked to Virginia earlier. But whatever, we got a motion.
So there's a motion? You guys can vote.
We have a motion and we have a second to turn this into parkland.
I have one, one more question though about the parking though. We, we've talked about allowing the people that kayak and have a trailer to park there. How is the police force or how, how are we going to distinguish then with that parking lot and say that it's only exclusive use by people that kayak and boat and not have regular people that love to come and go to the beach there?
Never said that.
Well, we have the difference because we're encouraging.
Never stated, Sam.
We are encouraging people to.
The question on the table, are we going to turn it into parkland?
Are we talking about the parking lot or the park?
The, well, the park, the parking lot is going to be part of the park. So yes or no?
No.
Okay, Nick?
Nope.
I would like to say, I would like for them to amend their motion for it to be a conservation park area.
Well, we've got two no's and two yeses. I don't know if we can legally do that at this point.
Well, it's changing the agenda item.
I'm a no. I've just gotten too many emails.
Okay, so we have three no's and two yeses. So this fails. So it will not.
I'll see you guys later. Bye.
So there's no sense talking about the next one, turning the Shell Crossing into parkland if we didn't turn the first part into parkland.
No, you can't close it.
No, because we put on there to, to close it to be parkland. So we will move on to the next item, 4.3. Motion whether to direct staff to create a public hearing for the tax increment in reinvestment zone, a terrors on property 28355. Any?
I have some comments on that. I know that that is, that property is only 2,000 acres. 28355 is only 2,000 acres. He mentioned 2,800 acres. So is there other PID's that aren't mentioned here that he wants to?
Probably included the other projects by Uland as well.
No, this, this property, 28355 is 2,800 acres. There's actually more property that they're talking about buying. It's more than just that one.
So the spirit of the motion for this is to, inspired from the last workshop, was to create a terrors in the express area to hand, hand out. Can you meet Mike for a second? Need a feedback. Uh, Mr. Clalor is on. I'll see if he's actively listening. Uh, let me bring up the CAD and show what property that, property ID.
I know what that one is, but he, but he mentioned 2,800 acres. That's only 2,000. That's why I'm confused. And it's on 142 and he said there was going to be a border on 142. The solar is going to be off of 142, not on it.
Can you bring this up?
And they have not bought the property yet. They're probably waiting to see if the city is willing to do this.
It's open by, it's owned by Capital Land Investments, number one LP.
Yeah, so he's clicked on there.
So as, as we know, the, the lot that we're, we've been talking about, um, is this awkward polygon? Perhaps it also includes this.
Yeah, 103. I believe that includes that.
Click that real quick.
He told me there was five lots.
Why does this look so weird? Why does this CAD look so weird?
It's what?
It's new. It's the new CAD.
I don't like.
When did that, when did that come into that?
Uh, like about a month ago.
I was just on the CAD two days ago.
Yeah, I know.
Although if you have the old bookmark, it'll take it back to the old search.
If you use a property search, it'll show up fine.
Are you going property search?
Yeah, property search up here. I don't, I don't know why it's doing that, but, um, here's that map.
Now you can click on that other one, right?
Yeah, the other one down here, yeah.
He told me it was five lots in total.
Who owns that?
To get to the 2,800.
So this is.
Yeah, it's, it's that one.
Two. It's, it's.
Oh, 1,000.
And then it's the two above that, I believe, just to north.
It's two?
No, uh, towards Lockhart. Uh, yeah. There you go. Click there. Leave that.
I could say we're going to in, enter from rail, railroad street, I thought. To get into the subdivision.
Went to my, that one.
Do they border that Tech Redwood?
Yes.
They do. Okay, yeah. So it's all this capital land investment.
It's that one as well.
But I.
And I think it's that little dinky one, maybe the square, the, the one on the diagonal.
Right.
That one and then the one that's inside of.
Thank you for bringing that up. But it'll be, now that I know this, it'll be.
You see that little one that's in the middle? I think that's the old home site.
Yeah, it's that old.
Yeah.
By the same company. Now, given, given with all that information, that would be included in these, these, public notice, other, the, the spirit of this motion is to seek direction from city council, whether, what their opinion was from the last workshop. If there is a appetite for council to move forward, at least at the public hearing for the terrors. If not, then this is where.
Can we put a condition on it that is only for the purpose that 2,000 acres are set aside for solar and it's not for some other use or gets put into some other use at a later time? Morphed, if you will? That's my intent. You know what I mean? His, his pitch was solar farm, 2,000 acres solar farm off of 142. That's that, you know, thousand, thousand and then 800 acres is in a economic zone for commercial, for actual retail space of some hill. I don't want this to morph into some resi or some other, you know. I don't want this to morph into some resi or some other, you know.
Want to include that in the ordinance?
I mean, once, uh.
Once he does a turs.
Well, yeah, I mean, once you, once you rub the lamp and.
That's why I'm asking the question.
You can't make it go back in the bottle. I, I mean, I mean, that's, that's the purpose of the public hearing is to have that conversation with folks and say, I mean, look, there's, there's an element of control that is lost. Once, once we do some of these things and get, get public input on.
Include that in the ordinance?
What's that?
Include that in the ordinance, upon creation of the turs? Only for the purpose of a solar farm or anything along those lines?
I, I mean, sure, that, 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 that could be also be part of the agreement with, with them, it's, I mean, it's just a matter of whether or not they would accept that. I mean, my guess is they wouldn't, but it always ends.
Might as well, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to direct city staff to create a public hearing for the tax increment reinvestment zone turs at property ID 28355. Do we want to include the other?
And other surrounding areas.
And other surrounding properties owned by, uh, capital investment. Uh, ready for the July 20th regular city council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, do you have a second?
I have a second condition of obviously, but as I have a second.
Or this motion can die and you can make that specific.
Yeah, let it die, I want, I want solar.
Hey, can I make a point?
Adrian, members of council.
I've built a little one here.
Who, who spoke first?
Does Bill, Bill.
Should we let, who, Mike, yes?
Can I speak?
Yes, Mike.
I, I agree with Mr. McGovern about having stipulations on that turs. I think he's correct that we need to have it just for the solar farm because we're, we could open up a can of worms. Because that's what they're applying for, so I think we need to have amendment to that stating that it was for the solar farm for this particular agreement.
So, were you going to say something?
Uh, yes, um, uh, members, uh, good evening, everybody, it's, it's, uh, it's been entertaining council meeting. Uh, yes, I, I don't, I don't see that there would be any objection to placing either in the creation ordinance or in the development agreement that would ultimately be brought to council for their approval. Uh, the, uh, you know, the re, the request that we limit, uh, you know, use of the reinvestment zone for solar farm and the commercial along 142. That is our development plan and strategy, uh, there's no intent to deviate from that. And so, uh, uh, we would, we would agree to that.
Oh, it already died since I wasn't a second.
Can I ask him some other questions? Or do I need to wait until they do redo that?
Go right ahead.
Um, so I wanted to ask that by the public hearing because number one, y'all don't even own the land yet. But yet we're already petitioning for a public hearing. So, I mean, I know that the chicken before the egg or whatever, you know, but like, are you, for the development where you're getting the funds from, how much is being funded by the government?
At this point, none of it.
So, where would the funding come from?
The funding for the acquisition and for the development of the land is actually going to be borrowed capital. So, borrowed capital from, from GCI from multiple sources. Uh, and, uh, we're not, we're not, at this point in time, we do, as I had mentioned, we do intend to seek grant funding. Uh, and, uh, the vast majority of that, if not all of that, assuming we get any of it, would likely be governmental. Uh, we've got targeted, uh, uh, you know, federal programs that we're looking to seek grant funding for. There is, uh, uh, grant, uh, funds already allocated for, uh, the job training for the people that will be actually doing the installation. But none of that will, will flow until, uh, the trigger is pulled on the, on, on the construction itself. And the local incentives that we would hope to derive from the turs are a critical part of the final decision to pull the trigger now.
You have any other questions?
I'm letting it process.
That's a lot.
I'm just letting it off because, you know, I, and then I was looking at the to, the total numbers. So, like, what Martin Dell would be getting back, but as far as the grant amounts, like you said, you don't even have that. That's going to go towards the training of the staff, but the total amount of grants, have y'all, so y'all have submitted for grants already on this property?
Uh, there's, there's a Tex, uh, Texas Workforce Commission allocation that has been made to Austin Community College. And we have an agreement with the college to provide that training for, uh, the people that we would hire to do the installation.
So, Matthew, you're saying if it's both the commercial land and the.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, to direct staff to create a public hearing for the tax, for the turs for property ID 28355 and surrounding properties, ready for the July 20th regular, uh, council meeting. Uh, conditional upon the agreement that 2,000 acres is set aside for, or is set for solar and the remaining is commercial. Yeah.
Yeah, I second that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion?
I wanted to ask the city, did anybody have any discussions with Caldwell County?
The city has not engaged Caldwell County, um, we typically pursue our development agreements separately. I know that the developer is, is looking to engage with them for separate incentives. It's different than the, possibly with the reinvestment zone or even other type of tax abatements or incentives that, that the county might provide.
Because I know that at the last time, whenever we had the presentation, whenever you said about Caldwell County going in on the funds and that they technically said that it was a yes, but, so nobody from our community has talked to anybody from Caldwell County?
No, and that, I, my understanding of the situation is, once the turs is created, then the developer is wanting to go to the county and ask for their participation in the turs that we created.
Which is us.
If, if the county does not want to enter into turs, it's likely that they would then, the developer would then ask the county for a tax abatement incentive like they have done elsewhere, uh, in the county for their other nearby projects. So, um, and I can't speak for the county of what they're going to do, but they're going to be asked for to pony up some money at some, at some manner.
That's why I just feel like as a city, like, it would be kind of like, it would be kind of like, you know, as a, as a county that we just have those discussions with them rather than letting them pursue those discussions.
It's their work to do.
But we are in Caldwell County and that is our county judge and we have commissioners that we can talk to.
Yeah, if, if I, if I might weigh in with council's permission, um, the, uh, the zone is, the zone is, is a municipal creation. And that's why we're talking to you now. Uh, and in, in, once that, typically, typically the, the, the process is that once the zone has been created, uh, when the developer goes to talk to the county and or any other jurisdiction, uh, because it is critically important that everybody work together. We, uh, at least as far as I go, I, you know, we don't do that alone. We would typically go with a city representation as well. So that the discussions that are had are not only intra-jurisdictional, but, but, uh, with, uh, the input from the developer who's going to be spending the money and taking the risk. And, um, Jared is right, there, you know, in, in our conversations with the county, uh, for the Uland project, we did discuss the turs. And they, they considered it, uh, I think that there's still a possibility that they may change their mind. But in that case, they offered a tax abatement instead of a turs. And, um, uh, as I, as I shared with council when I was there last, we didn't see, uh, a value in going and, and entering into another turs discussion with them unless we knew we had one to talk about. But, uh, we don't intend to do this alone. And in fact, once this is created, assuming we can get to that point, there isn't anything that we would do without the city, um, in tandem. Uh, because we've got to work together, that's how they work best.
Yes, we have a motion and a second, I'm a no. Oh.
Uh, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, um, to approve the three sets of minutes that are attached.
Why are we approving them?
So, our, our, uh, city accountant, because we've had some transitional line items has requested that there have been a written record of those transactions. Our auditors prefer to see written records of those motions made.
Minutes are usually approved.
I understand, but we haven't been doing every meeting, so, that's why I guess I'm curious, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so there's, there's two ways that, um, the city can comply with the records requirements. One is providing a recording, the other is providing written minutes. We have thus far, well recently, over the last year plus, um, rely on recordings of these, uh, Zoom sessions, which are posted online on our YouTube channel. What, what these minutes are for is to, is to be attached to, um, budget and financial items. And so that the auditors have a record.
So, I'm going to make a motion to approve, uh, 4.4A, uh, 3282023 Special City Council Meeting for 2023 Regular City Council Meeting and, uh, 05042023 Regular City Council Meetings.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, you don't have any more discussion or, or concern?
I'm abstaining, I was not involved in any of those.
Oh, because you, you weren't here during those meetings? Okay, I'll say aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you. Do you have anything to add to the future items?
So, I would like to, uh, go ahead and add back, uh, the land acquisition as far as what we decided on earlier, which was a no. But I would like to be their verbiage as far as protecting the canoers and the river rafters and also putting on their, uh, conservation area.
You want to change 42 to conservation set apart of that?
In correct signage.
Yeah, the correct signage and also for that area to be called, who donated the money? TPRA? For that area to be renamed to TPR?
Manola.
He gave the money to Alan Bates.
Yes, but that way to honor them because they did, did they have it written over here at this one?
Yes.
So, we're still going to have to name that area, correct?
Not necessarily, they gave the money to help fund Alan Bates. They, they didn't give us anything to help construct the conservation easement.
Okay.
That, that's a whole nother complicated.
Good for writing.
Their names, if it were.
Uh-huh. TPR, TPRA gave $23,000, I gave 500 bucks for Alan Bates years ago.
And then they wrote the ordinance to.
Yes, and we betrayed them, basically, that's all I got to say.
So, I would, I would like, like I said, for it to be put back on the agenda with the verbiage and who it specified for as far as, for the canoers and the people who are with it. Nick, do you have anything else to add, Sam?
No.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else to add to the future items?
When is our budget meeting again?
Next Friday.
Next Friday?
Yes. 14.
Okay. Uh, is it a workshop or a normal meeting?
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, wait, we're, we're, wait, we're, we're trying to figure out the time for a shot. What?
Leave it to workshop, I'll, I'll go back and.
The next Friday, okay.
July 14th.
July 14th, we'll, we'll find out the time, or we'll create the time.
Uh, so the bicycle ride.
Uh, I mean, are we going to talk more about the parks and the signage and the, all this stuff? Or are we just going to let it just mosey down the road?
That's what she just said.
No, I'm not talking about Skull, I'm talking about these, these parks. I mean, are we just going to just prepare and keep going and?
Is there not a park committee anymore?
Not really, no, no, there isn't. I mean, we need to talk about the parks, we need to talk about the concerns.
Put the signs up, we need to put the signs up. Period.
What signs, Mike? I had you, I'm sorry.
We need to put them up, I'm out of here, bye.
I'm not going to go there now, I'm not going to go there now, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.